It's 6:30. We'll call the December 11th meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present. We don't need item three. Can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous five oh. We're on to agenda item five, public comments for closed session items only. Is there any member of the public online who would like to address the council on the closed session item?
Mayor and Dury, we have no raised hands in our virtual audience and no speaker slips.
Okay, we will go into closed session and we will return at 7:00 p.m.
Have it in a kind of a tuck away place, yeah?
Thank you.
Council is back from closed session. There was no reportable action. Could I ask Mayor Horn to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? Erling, if you could come up to the podium, we need to get you on the soundtrack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
As we begin this meeting, we acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Mewoc people. The Bay Mewoc and neighboring Aloney people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They stewarded and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with indigenous communities that continue to live and work in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and next seven generations. It's now time for public comment on items not on the agenda. We continue to provide a teleconference option to the public as a courtesy subject to certain protocols, including the following directive. All public comments made during our public comments agenda item at the beginning of the meeting must be within the subject-mannered jurisdiction of the city. All public comments under other agenda items must relate to that agenda item. If this directive is ignored following a warning by me, the city clerk, or the city attorney, the city clerk will mute the speaker. As we now open public comment on items not on the agenda, I want everyone to be aware that we have an obligation under the First Amendment and the Brown Act to allow speakers to make their comments even if they are not compatible with our community values. While the council must hear them out if they are within the city's subject-mannered jurisdiction, anyone in the room should feel free to step outside and anyone at home should feel free to mute their audio. If we receive a large number of speakers, we reserve the right to move remaining public comment to the end of the meeting. And finally, a reminder that public comments are limited to three minutes. All right, are there any speaker slips for public comment?
Mayor Andry, I have a speaker slip from Robert Fellows, if he would come to the podium, please.
Tell me which button to press.
There should be a button on the base.
Hold it down while I'm speaking. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak to the issue of establishing a historical marker for the events of 1797. This is a battle between the Spanish military and the Sakland residents of the Lafayette area. It was the most significant event to occur in Lafayette as part of the more general Sakland resistance. It would be appropriate, in conjunction with the acknowledgement statement just read, that Lafayette create a more permanent marker easily available to the public to educate them on the local history. That the event occurred in Lafayette is supported by academic research, the Lafayette Historical Society's own publication, and other sources of information. The exact location is not needed to recognize the event and might cause issues regarding the exposure of archaeological sites. I originally made a query to Lafayette in November 2022 and was referred to the Lafayette Historical Society. Though we've communicated on this topic, we haven't been able to move forward on the establishment of a physical marker or the recognition of the event on the Historical Society's website. My ask to the council is to establish a process and a person responsible for accomplishing the goal of setting up a physical marker in 2024. This would include selecting appropriate language for the plaque, including descriptions and historical sources such as Randall Milliken's work A Time of Little Choice that introduced me to his research into the Spanish journals documenting the history of the area. It would also include finding a suitable public location such as Lafayette Plaza Park or the library. And if there is an issue of funding, there could be a funding drive to reach out to various sources who should be happy to support a physical acknowledgement of local Native American history. I would appreciate being involved in all aspects of this process. And let me know if you have any questions and please get back to me on the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, Speaker? Okay, thank you very much. And we had indicated to Mr. Fellows that because this is not an item on the agenda, we as a council can't discuss it. So we'll discuss whether or not to put it on a future agenda later in the meeting.
Mayor Andry, I have no additional speaker slips and I have no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Okay, so we'll close public comments and we'll move to the city manager's update.
Good evening, city council members and members of the audience, both here and virtually. This is going to be a little different in terms of what I'm going to update you on. It's almost like a year at a glance, since this is our last meeting. I wanted to provide you and the community with some fun facts and statistics to give you a glimpse of what goes on in running and maintaining a city, which takes up about 90% of staff's time, the remaining 10% being emergency situations and special projects. So from all the departments here goes. Administration, the city clerk notarized 117 documents, recorded 79 documents, prepared 27 agendas and minutes of the council meeting, and responded individually to thousands of emails. At last count, I thought it was about 3,500. From communications, we have expanded our communication sources. Our most popular is the weekly roundup email. We have close to 2,000 subscribers, followed by Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, X. General news email, almost daily briefing, gets about 1,100 subscribers and 367 on LinkedIn. From our banner program, this year we installed seven different banners representing various aspects of the season and of Lafayette. From finance, we issued 4,886 vendor payments and made 2,128 payroll payments. From engineering, we installed, used, or issued 20 new ADA ramps, 557 linear feet of guardrail, 2,310 square feet of retaining wall, 28,258 square feet of pathway ADA compliant, used over 2,000 tons of asphalt for paving, striped 18,000 linear feet of road, issued 575 encroachment permits, took 1,051 public works orders, and finally issued almost 3,000 underground service alert tickets. It's like the 12 days of Christmas, only longer. In addition to that, the engineering staff were successful in securing $4.1 million in transportation grant funding this year, which may be a record. From planning, it is clear that interest rates, which are rising, and cooler lending markets have impacted development activity. We had 255 development applications submitted this year as compared with 322 last year. Thirty applications for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, as compared to almost 60 last year. And then we received 16 SB9 applications compared to six last year. From police, from January through October, the police department took 11,218 calls for service, investigated 163 separate crimes, and arrested 258 individuals. And finally, from parks, trails, and recreation, 8,307 class enrollments in 2023, which is up by almost 400 from the last year. 268 families benefited from the Tiny Tots preschool programs. Ninety kids per day take the school bus from Burton Valley to our after-school programs at our community center. 595 kids enrolled in after-school enrichment in our elementary schools. 1,300 enrollments in summer camp programs. 296 camp connections for our morning and afternoon programs. 623 pickleball class enrollments, very popular, and countless participated in the age-friendly drop-in. 340 joined the senior service membership. And 3,500 rides were provided by the La Merinda van program, the Spirit Van. None of this would have been possible without the support of the community, the leadership of this council, and the hard work and dedication of city staff. On behalf of staff, I would like to thank everyone for your support and wish you happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Questions for our city manager? Okay, are there any public comments or questions? Is there anyone in the hall who's filled out a speaker slip?
No speaker slips and no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next item, presentations, starting with Don Tatson. And something I've always wanted to do, welcome Don to the Don Tatson Community Hall.
Thank you. I want to, again, appreciate the fact that you've been taking care of the hall well. That's good. So I'm here as your appointee to the County Connection Board of Directors and also as the community representative to La Merinda from State Senator Stephen Glazer. So I'm going to have two reports in one tonight. And I happen to be chair of the County Connection Board this year. That occurred October, November, so. Regarding County Connection, you may have noticed that several years ago, people were told that COVID was spreading and that they should stay home and not go to work and things like that. Surprisingly, that had an effect on our ridership. And even when that restriction was lifted, everyone just didn't go back and get on the bus the next day. However, County Connection has done far better than most of the transit agencies in the Bay Area, one of the top three or four. But we're still probably down 20%. And it varies with the origin and destination. So for example, trips to BART are down the most, just as BART traffic is down the most. School trips are actually probably higher than they were before. And what else is doing fairly well is trips to local destinations, like trips if people have to work along the Monument Corridor. La Merinda is served by one route, Route 6, and our experience is roughly the same as that of the system. The use of Route 6 to get to BART stations is not doing well. Use of Route 6 to get to Miramonte and Campbell Lido High School is doing pretty well. In fact, it's higher than last year. During the pandemic, a lot of operators who have been with us for 30 or 40 years took that opportunity to retire. We have not been as successful as we wish in hiring replacements, but we're doing better than many, and I think it's just a matter of time. Some of the innovations that County Connection has put in place have to do with paratransit service. So for example, historically, if you wanted to go from San Ramon to Livermore, you had to get on a paratransit vehicle in San Ramon, go to somewhere in the Never Never Land, and between that and Livermore, get off, get on the next van. So now we've implemented what's called one-seat ride, and you can get on and get off where you're supposed to go. And so it makes life a lot more convenient for those passengers. And County Connection and the Livermore Area Valley Transportation Authority, whatever they're called, is receiving big kudos for that. It's a little, I mean, both, it's good news and it's scary, if that's all it takes. And there's a single contract. The Livermore area has agreed to let County Connection administer the contract. We charge them a fee. It all works out. So when I took courses in college regarding transit, the standing joke was that when they went out and talked to transit riders, or people who weren't riding transit, the sense was you actually had to pay them to get them to ride transit. You couldn't just charge them nothing. You actually had to pay them. And now, too many years later, we're sort of moving in that direction. So for example, one of the things we're doing is setting established transit signal priorities along heavily used routes so that buses get priority. And then the result is that the people on the bus get to where they're going in less time than the people in cars. The, there are also long-term discussions about bus on shoulder along I-680 during the congested periods. And it's not that these buses will go really fast. They'll just go faster than the traffic that isn't on the shoulder. And again, it's a savings in time. We're also testing autonomous vehicles in the county hospital around Martinez. And this is a follow-on from the test we used to have at Bishop Ranch. The bigger news, and transit may have to wait until 2026, when there's likely to be a ballot measure put forward by Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments. And probably that has to go and get approval from the legislature. This is really early stages, put it mildly. In my view, there are some good ideas, but some of them come at the cost of local autonomy. So I just encourage you to be vigilant. Here's some possible areas of focus. You've probably all heard about the fiscal cliff facing some of the large transit agencies. Well, one of the theories is that this would resolve that. Efficiency and consolidation of smaller operators has been a proposal that smaller operators, it can only be no more than one per county. Contra Costa in comparison has four. The, you know, there's just other things that are brewing around. And I would say that the sponsors don't really have their act together yet, but they might. Here are some of the unknowns. Which counties are included? We talk about nine Bay Area counties. Are all nine Bay Area counties included that? Or do Solano, Marin, and some others not have to be included? What's the nature of the accountability? You may recall that by moving into the Senator Glazer portion of my proposal, he submitted legislation that basically said that the inspector general for BART would have the same powers as the inspector general for other agencies that are well-known. It passed the state senate and was vetoed by the unions essentially. They organized to stop it. What's the focus of the expenditure plan? Is this a large operator bailout? Or is it going to make up for the fact that Regional Measure 3, which was the last thing you got to vote on, sent more money to the large counties per capita than to the small counties? Like us. So we wound up sort of funding it. So is this going to be a repeat of that? I think some people think it should be. Other people think it shouldn't. So sit tight until January, which apparently is the next meeting. But we expect it to make your voices heard and tell us what you want included. I want to bring to your attention that there are two members of the BART board that represent Lafayette. Deborah Allen and Rebecca Salzman. So Deborah to the north of the 5A24, Rebecca to the south. Neither is running for reelection. So if you know somebody who you think would be a good BART board member, even if you don't agree with them all the time, it's good to make sure that we have people. it's, it's good to make sure that we have people who are interested in running. So please. For the Senator's twenty twenty-three, that, that session is over. And we have more bills signed than not. However, there are about twenty-six hundred bills submitted to the legislature each year. And if I tried to rattle off some of the ones that he proposed that got signed, you wouldn't remember them by the time you took your next sip of water, but I won't. And then moving on to twenty twenty-four, that's going to be Senator Glazer's last year. And he is thinking carefully about where his focus will be for that year, otherwise known as, he hasn't told us what any of the proposed legislation is going to be yet, so I can't tell you. His focus has historically been things like accountability, transparency, and fairness. You should expect a race for his seat in a newly-defined district, or the new district will include San Leandro and San Lorenzo, will no longer include Brentwood, yeah, Livermore, Dublin, et cetera, which I guess are not as close as San Leandro and San Lorenzo. So please, but in the meantime, we are putting together legislative concepts. And so if you've got ideas for things you'd like to see become law, please pass them on to us. And with that, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Don? Great, thank you. Are there any public questions or comments?
I see no hands raised, and I have no speaker slips, Mayor Endury.
Okay, thank you very much. Item eleven B, Senior Services Commission, update on goals and accomplishments.
Since he is the person that most actively runs the agenda at our meetings, I was deferring to him. But my name is Conrad Brice. I'm the vice chair of the Senior Services Commission. And on behalf of Terry Black, she sends her regrets. She'd love to be here. She's recuperating from shoulder surgery a week ago. So, well, anyway, we send her best wishes. I have here with the other members of the committee, commission that are here, Stephanie Carrasco. She is not yet an oath-taking member of the commission, because we've had a little trouble getting that lined up. But she will be by next month. Next, Carol Federighi is a member of the U and is a member of the commission. Dorothy Walker, member of the commission, and Ruth McCacken is a member of the commission. And I'd like to say that just last week, with La Marinda, the Village's afternoon of gratitude, Ruth McCacken was surprised when she was given a Paul Harris Fellow Award from the Lafayette La Marinda Sunrise Royalty for her involvement with La Marinda Village, and particularly its founding of La Marinda Village. And it was, it's rare to see Ruth at a loss for words, but she was at a loss for words. Okay, we're gonna, why don't you go to the, I just done the members. Okay, let's go to the next one here. So, we have been working, I've been on the commission now five years, and we've been working on Lafayette age-friendly community as under the auspices of the Associate, American Association of Retired People. We've been working on domains, the names of which are on the PDF up here, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic engagement, employment, communication and information, community and health services, and emergency repaired, preparedness. And there are multi-page grids for each one of these areas. And they have been something that I never liked doing as a lawyer, which was drafting by committee. But we've drafted a lot of things and wordsmithed them. And I think we're coming up with excellent documents. We're hoping to be able to be in a position to have a public meeting with the public to go over these things and get their comments. Let me show the highlights. So in front of you are the list of the highlights, the things that I've been working on this year. The domain tables that I've talked about. We're planning a town hall meeting in twenty twenty-four, which will be to review these tables. La Marinda Spirit Van received a twenty thousand dollar contribution from the town of Maraga, which was a surprise. They haven't been ready with writing a check. They've been ready with requests, but not too often with a check. So I'm glad that that happened. The senior services programming, very active under Johnson's auspices. Particularly, there was a laugh earlier when pickleball was, uh, however, the hockey rink has become pickleball rink, which the hockey players occasionally get to play on. And Senior Services Commission with the city council and our new relationship with La Marinda Village has worked on supported memberships. And in that connection, I'd like to have Catherine Ishizu, the executive director of La Marinda Village, and Suzie Pack, the community outreach director, come up and tell us what's happening with that.
Hi, my name is Catherine Ishizu. I'm the executive director for La Marinda Village. I'm deeply grateful for this opportunity to come before you on behalf of our organization and express our heartfelt appreciation for the trust and partnership extended to us through the Lafayette Senior Services and the City of Lafayette. Together, we have embarked on a mission to support older adults in our community, and the collaboration has been remarkable. The City of Lafayette's commitment to the well-being of our elderly population has seamlessly aligned with our organizational goals, enabling us to make a significant impact. We are here today to give you an update on our progress. Back in March of this year, the city of, the city council approved and allocated up to sixty thousand dollars a year to pay membership dues for qualified Lafayette seniors. As of December, La Marinda Village now has thirty, three hundred and thirty-eight total members. We have added sixty-seven Lafayette-supported members, which is a twenty-four point seven percent increase to our overall membership, and a significant one hundred and fifteen percent increase to our supported memberships from last year. A figure we are all proud of. As of today, we have received a little over thirty thousand dollars in funds from the City of Lafayette. Thank you. We use these funds to retain an exceptional individual deeply committed to community engagement. Suzie Pack, our part-time, but in reality, full-time community outreach coordinator, and she's going to take over from here.
All right. So what is La Marinda Village? I know you all know what La Marinda Village is. But for those who might not be as familiar with, these are direct statements taken from our website, lamarindavillage.org, if you're interested. And I think what you'll find is, if you look at how we've described ourselves, the key theme that keeps coming up is really about connections. We are a nonprofit. We are made up of residents, members from Lafayette, Maraga, and Arinda. But we also have memberships or members from outside the area who love our values, love what we provide, and want to be a part of it. In order to be a member, you only need to be fifty-five years old. So keep that in mind. And, you know, part of, part of our goal is really to help create those connections that our members or our community may not find as easily as they did when they had children in school or if they were in the workplace and they had that very casual social interaction. So we want to, in addition to providing opportunities to meet neighbors and make new friends, but also we provided a number of really great services for our members who need them. So as part of this arrangement, partnership, whatever you want to call it, with the City of Lafayette, we talked about what do we want to do? What does La Marinda Village want to do to uphold our part of this deal? And how are we going to do that and be successful? We, first thing we needed to do was really build awareness of La Marinda Village. What is it? People have heard the name, but they don't actually know what a virtual network is. I didn't know when I first heard it four or five years ago. So we want to explain that to people. We also wanted to increase our membership, because the more people you have, the more, the more, it's representative of our diverse population. And we think that that's very, very important. We do have a number of programs and activities and resources that were already available to our members. But we wanted to improve on that, because as we added new members, we wanted to find out what their needs were and what their interests were, and, and, and work with them to make that happen. In addition to taking care of our members, we also wanted to encourage new volunteers and existing volunteers to expand their horizons. And I will note that a lot of our members are also volunteers, so it's not one or the other. And lastly, our, one of our biggest goals is, in addition to providing services and programs and activities for our members, we also wanted to provide some opportunities for the, the community at large. If you're fifty-five and over, you are welcome. There are a number of things at a later slide that I'll share with you that are, that are available, whether, whether or not you're, you're a member or not. So the process that we, we, we took on, on how are we going to, how are we going to achieve our goals? Okay, we need to tell people what La Marinda Village is. We need to educate and inform. We also need to talk to people. We need to find out, instead of us guessing or thinking, oh, we know what they need, we know what they want, is really ask them. And that's what we've done. We wanted to be able to add value to, to our members and to the community. We know that there are a lot of organizations that provide great services and programs. And we wanted to, to contribute in that way, and also share a lot of those resources with everybody. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We want to integrate into what we had already established for our members. So we want to take on new things, but we didn't want to go too fast. We wanted to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the very special experience that we provided historically for our members, and replicate that as we expand. And then the important thing is, we also need to evaluate our work. We need to find out if what we're doing meets the needs of our members and of our community. Are we serving them in the way that they would like to be served? And are we addressing the needs that we have identified? We need to adjust with that feedback, make tweaks, whether it's ours, whether it's interests. And in doing so, we also uncover new information that helps inform what we do next. And then we start all over again with rinse and repeat. All right. So these are some of the things that we have engaged in since we, we started back in, in March. One of the things that we, that we, and by we, I mean our three employees, Catherine, our executive director, Laura Kate Rurka, who's our development coordinator, and myself. We reached out to, and this is just a, a sample of some of the, some of the places that we've reached out to, that we were already working with, some of these. Some of these are new. And, you know, we wanted, we wanted to figure out how can we reach our target members? How can we reach our seniors that may be no longer driving? That may not have an opportunity to hear about us because they don't have email, or they don't, they're not online? How are we going to reach them? And a lot of the information and a lot of the ideas came from these organizations and these businesses. We've gone to doctors' offices. We've dropped off pamphlets and let folks know, you know, at, if you, if you have patients who don't have family in the area and could benefit from some of these things, if you have patients who, they're taking Uber to come to their appointments and they're just being dropped off, we can help with that. So we want to make sure that they know who we are, and we're reaching the people that, that might want to join us. One of the most fun activities that La Marinda Village has done is Golden Happy Hour, which is a monthly event that is sponsored by either a business or individuals. And these are some of the local businesses here in Lafayette who have, we have worked with to, to, to provide those opportunities. They're very popular, and they typically, we have to cap out at fifty participants. It's a sell-out. But it's, again, there's, there's no charge. And this is something that we, we provide to our members, but also to community members at large. So one of the things, because this was so popular, and members love coming to these events, that the sponsors would pay for the appetizers that are served. And it provides a great opportunity on a regular basis for folks to come out and socialize. And there's no cost. All we ask is that you are SVP. But one of the things that came out of it was, we met with Merrill Gardens. And Merrill Gardens, as you know, is on the other side of Mount Diablo. And we talked to them about how they could help support the senior community that may not even live at Merrill Gardens or have set foot inside their, inside their walls. And they are very willing and helped us provide a over-the-top, amazing happy hour with over a hundred and fifty people last month. They provided live entertainment, wine, which is always a big hit with our members, and appetizers. We had our National Charity League volunteers bake desserts. And what that allowed us to provide for our members is a chance to actually reconnect with maybe some of their old neighbors, some of their old friends, their old colleagues that they hadn't seen in a while. And I have heard many instances of folks going early before the happy hour to, to reconnect, or staying later, staying later for dinner. And as a result of this successful collaboration, they have agreed to make this new annual tradition. So every November, Merrill plans on hosting this, and for our members and for the community. And in fact, we are also talking about other ways to work with them, to utilize some of their space for classes and things. One of our long-term partners and greatest supporters has been the Lafayette Library Learning Center Foundation. They have been stalwart since the beginning. And these are just a list of some of the things that are happening with their support. You've probably heard of Senior Swell, which takes place at the, the cafe across the way. And this is something that we piloted in August. Start, it's every Tuesday morning from ten to twelve. It's just a drop-in, where we have a volunteer who's here tonight, who plans these amazing snack displays, which is terrible when she's out of town, because it looks terrible when I bring my Trader Joe's cookies and whatever. But it's, it's fantastic, because we want to be able to provide a very casual, low-key, no-registration-required opportunity for anybody to drop in. And we have had attendees come from all over, all over the county. They happen to be walking by. They read about us in the, the county newsletter. They read about us in the library newsletter. It's fantastic. They've also helped host monthly sing-alongs that have happened in this room. We also held a movie matinee, where we showed a movie on this big screen right here. And one of the most exciting things that they have, they have offered is to provide financial support to our organization with senior transportation. And what this means is, this will not only affect our members who take the Spirit Van, but will also help boost the Spirit Van, because it will allow us to use those funds to reimburse the Spirit Van for the rides that we provide for our members. And those are all available, again, at, at no charge to our members. So it's just a fantastic, I think, display of, of how we're working together to, to support our community. One of the other things that we really want to do, in addition to providing, you know, opportunities for our members, is we also want to provide opportunities for our community to volunteer. And these are some of the pictures that just highlight some of the opportunities. And I'll just tell you, on the left, you'll see National Charity League volunteers who are gathering together to stuff fall bags that were dropped off on the doorstep of every member. In the middle, you'll see a, a sign-up, and this is for a new program that we started with the help of Chateau. They receive a delivery from White Pony Express every Wednesday. Every Wednesday, we provide three volunteers, some of whom are in this room tonight, who actually take the produce that's dropped off. They sort it, and they bag it for the residents at They sort it and they bag it for the residents at Chateau who have signed up for deliveries. And it's been a really, really, um, tremendous opportunity. And people keep coming back because they're, they enjoy it. It's, it's a, it's a light lift, but it's, it's fun and it's engaging. And you get to actually interact with the people that you're serving, which is, which is terrific. And then you'll see over, in fact, there's Ruth, um, sorting, sorting produce right there. She's one of our, our most loyal volunteers all the way around. And in addition to that, she, she also sorts produce. The card that you see above is an inspirational card that some of the students at Lafayette Elementary wrote, uh, during Be Kind Month. They decorated, they had lunchtime activities where the students on the playgrounds, uh, put together cards. And we use those as centerpieces and as decorations for an event and lunch that we held for our members. So we're trying to integrate schools and it's, it's been terrific. So we look forward to doing more of that. So I mentioned earlier, uh, the things that we're doing to expand what we offer our members. We also are expanding community services that are open to anybody, regardless of if you live here or if you are a member. And these are some of the, some of the things that we, that we provide. We are still, we are connecting, we act as a resource hub for seniors and their families who call us with questions or need referrals. We do have, uh, a weekly email that goes out with those resources. We provide weekly village conversations by Zoom where we actually get world-class experts in a variety of topics, and that is open to anybody. The swell center, the sing-alongs, happy hours, and we've got lots more in the works. Many of you remember that in January of twenty twenty-one, uh, La Merinda Village put together the first vaccination clinic where we served and vaccinated over six hundred, uh, folks in the area. Since then, we've expanded, twenty twenty-two, I believe we had two. This year, we had three. We work with Contra Costa Health to provide flu and COVID booster, uh, vaccine clinics. And we do that in partnership with Lafayette Aranda Presbyterian Church. And also, um, this year, we worked with Belterra Eden Housing to provide, provide one onsite for their residents and staff. These are some pictures from some of the sing-alongs that we do. And, uh, this is a quote from, uh, maybe somebody here in this room who was encouraged to come to a sing-along, who said, "I can't carry a tune, I can't sing." And we said, "Just come and just mouth the words, no one will know." So even if you can't carry a tune, you are always welcome. So what have we learned in our six, seven months together? We have learned that La Merinda Village is hard to explain to somebody that doesn't know. They, they think you cannot provide, you certainly cannot provide all of those fun programs, grocery shopping, handyman help, things like that. That seems too good to be true. What's the catch? So they're thinking. But what we've really found is that the best form of, of actually sharing what La Merinda Village is, is word of mouth. If we can reach individuals and invite them to come, and if they have a positive experience, they will tell their friends and they will bring their friends. And we have seen that happen. It ta, it's, it's labor-intensive because it does take time to cultivate that. But we have found that that has developed the most loyal participants and the ones who are enthusiastic about it, see and appreciate the value and, and love coming. So as part of that, I wanted to share with you, speaking of, uh, Too Good To Be True, I have invited three folks who have been part of this, this experience. And they're here tonight, and I've asked them to come and to share, uh, uh, some, some of their thoughts. So first, we have Beth Brown, who's the volunteer who prepares, prepares an amazing, uh, snack buffet at Senior Swell on Tuesdays.
Mayor, can I suggest we do that as part of public comment?
Sure.
Given that the agenda item, I think, is more specific to senior services. But I think we can hear from those individuals maybe as part of public comment, if that's all right.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, hold that thought. So in, in conclusion, um, we believe that this has been highly successful. And just to, you know, demonstrate our, our enthusiasm, green hills, great schools, and really good people. So we, on behalf of our organization, thank you. Thank you for, um, and thank you to Jonathan for conceptualizing this and making it happen.
I mentioned earlier, the last Friday, they had the afternoon of gratitude, which honors or asks people that have worked for La Merinda Village. And Catherine said she was ebullient as she walked around saying, "There are more people here today than we have ever had come one of these." Every table was taken, people were sitting at all the tables. And I would say people stayed for forty-five minutes after the official ending. Uh, so we're doing something right.
And I'll just add from staff's side, uh, we have, uh, Ricky Jester in the audience as well. Uh, she's the coordinator for the La Merinda Spirit Van program. Uh, if you have, if the community has any needs regarding the Spirit Van, you may email dispatch@loveLafayette.org or anything regarding age-friendly questions about the village, uh, access to the, um, to the supportive membership, uh, the city website all has that information, as well as emailing seniors@loveLafayette.org. Uh, it's been a wonderful collaboration to have the village working with the Spirit Van, the age-friendly communities, Lafayette Senior Services. It's just been a showcase of how we can leverage a lot of volunteers in the community to make a big difference. So thank you, everybody, for being part of this.
Okay, now everyone stay where you are. Um, are there any questions from council members? All right, are there any questions or comments from the public?
I have no speaker slips and no hands raised, Mayor Endury.
Okay, we have three people, uh, who, if we, if you could come to the podium and then, uh, fill out a speaker slip, uh, afterwards, that would be great.
Is this on? Hi, my name is Beth Brown, um, and I am a volunteer with La Merinda Village. I'm a new volunteer, sort of. I did help, um, in twenty twenty when we did the vaccination clinic, and that really touched my heart. I love to volunteer. I've worked with a couple of you on stage, um, volunteering. And, um, when Suzie asked me about Senior Swell, she was just telling me about it. And she said, "Do you wanna?" And I'm like, "Yes." I don't know what she's gonna say, but if Suzie asks me, I will do it. Um, and I got involved with it and I absolutely, I think it means more to me than it means to the people that come. Um, it's been amazing because I've met a lot of wonderful people, some in this room. And, um, I think it's just a place for, for people to connect. It gets very lonely, um, when your kids are out of school. You don't have those same connections anymore. And maybe you don't have a partner anymore. This is a place where these people have come to connect. We play games, we have a little food, we have a lot of fun conversation. And I, we started, our goal was to have two people. And so I called Suzie and I said, "Suzie, we're gonna meet that goal because you and I will be here if nobody else shows up." But that day, we had about five, I think, five or six visitors. And then a couple of weeks in, I started taking count. And our, our average was about five to six people. And our greatest was eleven, and that was recently. Um, and it's drop-in, anybody can come, you don't have to sign up. Um, it's just been a wonderful experience for me. Um, I love volunteering, I'm now getting involved with the Spirit Van as well because I think this is such an amazing program for the seniors in our community. So thank you so much for including me and, um, and for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you very much.
What about now? Okay. Uh, I, so my name is Theodore, I'm a service coordinator for Belterra, one of the buildings that, uh, La Merinda Village, um, comes to. So I started working with seniors, um, as a service coordinator, particularly at Belterra. I've actually worked in Lafayette for like past ten years, um, since I've lived in California, actually. Um, and I, it's remarkable to see bounce back after COVID. I had graduated with a human development degree. And one of the things they taught us, we had to read, is that seniors, the high percentage, they actually want to live at home. They actually, because they have roots. And what makes them roots is the community around them. And first, I just want to say, um, to the city who's poured in and got behind La Merinda, just thank you for your gracious work, first and foremost. Thank you so much. And the second thing, um, when Catherine was, uh, introduced to me as a partner through my, uh, Eden Housing, we talked and we outreach to my, um, community. And then I got introduced to Suzie. Then we started brainstorming together, I think it's the service coordinator syndrome here, where we just try to think of ideas where we can outreach to the seniors. And then we saw a great success in that movie matinee. I have one of my residents here who you'll see afterwards. The bounce back of seeing my seniors, much in the, uh, pictures that you've seen, is my residents. They're getting out in the community after COVID. Where I didn't, in, because I got, I started in the midst of COVID. And then going through, even when it was, uh, back open, residents didn't come out. But since having a partnership with La Merinda Village, I've seen a lot more of my residents come out into the community, make connections, volunteering. And one resident whom you will hear from, um, I won't give away what she's gonna say, but as a service coordinator who loves serving people, it melts your heart to hear the testimonies from a younger generation to an older generation. And that connection through La Merinda Village has been a great impact at Belterra Senior Housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, and thank you. I, excuse me. I am a winged horse. And also a resident of, uh, Belterra. Excuse me. But recently, I was asked what the best time of my life was, actually by Suzie Park. Thank you. And I thought long and hard because I've had really good times and really bad times. But as a senior, I was suddenly in a position of needing to rent rooms in other people's houses. But, uh, suddenly, after six years of waiting, I got in at Belterra. And it, uh, it was probably six or eight months after I moved in there that Catherine made a presentation at one of our meetings. And I signed up immediately. It just sounded too good to be true. And I am naturally an introvert, so it took me probably five or six months to do anything. And, um, excuse me. It just, uh, it's made a huge, huge difference in my life. Because I am very introverted. I will stay in my apartment with my cat and be quite happy. But I also know that it's not the way that a person should be living. But I, excuse me, I have no family here. I have one, one child and she lives in Italy, so, you know, I don't need things at the moment, but, you know, the time will come. And I know I have La Merinda Village there. I worried at first that we might be treated differently, being from the, uh, Belterra. Hasn't been the case even once, even slightly. Oh, excuse me. This organization has allowed me to loosen up my introversion, do volunteer work and meet so many nice people, and my calendar is full. It, uh, it's, it's just amazing. When I was working, my ca, calendar wasn't full, but with La Merinda Village, it is. And so the best time of my life is right now, at eighty-two. I finally have a really, really, really nice life. You know, I do what I want. I'm around absolutely fabulous people and goodbye. And, and thank you for the Spirit Van. I couldn't do without it.
Hey, are there any other public comments?
Mayor Endury, I have no speaker slips and no hands raised in the virtual audience.
Okay, well, thank you. Do you have, well, let me thank the Senior Services Commission for all that, that you do. And thank you to La Merinda Village for coming and giving this report. I think the collaboration of our Senior Services Commission, La Merinda Village, City of Lafayette, is one of the most significant things that we've done this year. So thank you very much. And I'd like to recognize Sharon Iverson, who's the president of the La Merinda Village Board, and Gordon, Gordon Chong, who's a Lafayette resident who's also on the La Merinda Village Board. So thank you for, for serving. Okay, so one of the, um, Conrad mentioned the, uh, uh, afternoon of gratitude, that, uh, La Merinda Village, uh, celebrated, um, on Friday. And, all right, Count, Cap, all right, Councilmember Gueranger and I had the, the privilege of attending. And, uh, as you've heard, there are many volunteers. There are some who volunteer more than others. There are some who contribute more than others. And each year, the La Merinda Village, uh, recognizes, actually, they started last year, and this was the second year, they, uh, recognize, uh, one, uh, individual and give to them their Don Jenkins La Merinda Village Service Award. Uh, so I am going to read the proclamation, uh, from the City of Lafayette to this year's award winner, Ruth McCacken. Proclamation of the City of Lafayette. Whereas Ruth McCacken was appointed to the Lafayette Senior Services Commission on November fourteenth, two thousand and five, and has served with distinction on the commission from that date to the present, including as Lafayette's delegate to the County Advisory Council on Aging and as a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee that guided the development of a one-hundred percent affordable senior housing project in downtown Lafayette. That would be Belterra. And whereas Ruth McCaca, McCacken formed a task force in twenty twelve that led to her founding of La Merinda Village and being elected its first president in twenty thirteen. And whereas Ruth McCacken's remarkable vision and dedication to creating La Merinda Village have enriched the lives of older adults throughout our community by enabling them to age safely, independently, and with a strong sense of connection while living in their own homes. And whereas in recognition of Ruth McCacken's enormous contributions, La Merinda Village is honoring her with the twenty twenty-three Don Jenkins La Merinda Village Service Award. Now, therefore, the Lafayette City Council congratulates Ruth McCacken on receiving the Don Jenkins La Merinda Village Service Award and thanks her for her vision, her leadership, and her many years of service that have made our community an even better place to live. Thank you, Ruth. And now, this is one of those rare opportunities for, uh, a photo opportunities. Gathering front here.
I'm missing the very last person. Okay, all right, here we go. On the count of three, one, two, three. All right. That's great. Thank you.
All right, item 11C. As we reorganize the council, I would just note that this is the first opportunity we have had in four years since December 2019 to hold our annual council reorganization in person. So yes, this is the first peaceful in-person transfer of power since 2019. It has been a, a real privilege to serve as your mayor during the past year. I want to thank my wife Sharon for her support. I want to thank my fellow council members for being such collaborative colleagues. I want to thank our city manager and all our city staff for all they have done for us during the past year. And I want to acknowledge and thank the hundreds of volunteers on the city's commissions, committees, and task forces, and the volunteers at the Chamber, the Library Foundation, the Lafayette Community Foundation, the Park Theater Trust, La Marinda Village, El Pi, the homeowners associations, Lafayette Historical Society, and so many other community organizations that have contributed so much to our city. It is the volunteer spirit of this community that sets us apart. Working together, our city staff and our city volunteers accomplished quite a bit this past year. First and foremost, there's the important ongoing work of the city. This ongoing work includes enforcing the law and keeping us safe, providing recreation programs and recreation venues, developing, improving, and maintaining our infrastructure, maintaining a healthy general fund reserve through fiscally prudent practices, generally providing all the services to which residents have become accustomed. During her city manager's update, Nrup gave you some of the highlights and the vast numbers involved in this ongoing work. What surprises me is how much our staff and our volunteers are able to accomplish each year above and beyond this very important ongoing work. I think it's useful to look back on what we, all of us, accomplished during this past year. In January, we approved an updated housing element for the general plan and submitted it to the state prior to the January deadline. During the year, staff, our residents, and the council have spent thousands of hours working on the revised housing element update that is now out for public comment. All year, we have been celebrating 175-plus years of Lafayette history. This has given us a better understanding of our past, particularly our pre-European past, and a better understanding of the inevitability of change and how change has shaped our present. It's also raised awareness of the value of a group that helps us learn lessons from our past, the Lafayette Historical Society. As part of our celebration of 175-plus years, we installed seven Lafayette history-themed utility box wraps along Mount Diablo Boulevard. We also adopted our land acknowledgement statement and related protocols. We adopted and implemented the Safe Firearms Storage Ordinance. In April, we opened the First Street Rain Guard. Our Creeks Committee installed new signs along our creeks. We have 16 miles of creeks in Lafayette, and the committee wants to make our residents more aware of them. We purchased the Campana property on Maraga Road and the Police Station property on Mount Diablo Boulevard. We opened the new children's deck at the Lafayette Library and Learning Center. We began collaborating with La Marinda Village to provide services to older adults in Lafayette. We approved a $1.5 million loan to Sunflower Hill to help finance construction of 38 residential units for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. In June, we co-hosted the Second Annual Community Day. We began a partnership with Sustainable Contra Costa and launched the La Marinda Sustainability Challenge. That is Lafayette challenged Maraga and Arinda to see who could score more points on Sustainable Contra Costa's Sustainable Action Platform during 2023. It turns out that we were very successful in spurring our neighbors on to greater sustainability. Because of, as of this morning, Lafayette had scored 119,000 points. Maraga had scored 197,000 points. And Arinda won the challenge with 276,000 points. So congratulations to Arinda and Maraga. But wait till next year. The city's Environmental Task Force and our Recreation Department initiated a loner program for residents to try out electric induction cooktops and electric leaf blowers. On the recommendation of the Environmental Task Force, the council adopted an ordinance banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers beginning July 1st, 2024. Council members and city staff collaborated with the Chamber of Commerce on outreach to downtown businesses. We extended the authority for outdoor dining until January 2025 and made improvements to the traffic barriers along Lafayette Circle. The orange barriers are now a distant memory. In September, we launched a new Lafayette business promotion website, Experience Lafayette. We used American Rescue Plan Act funds to develop the website. The Public Art Committee developed a downtown mural program that was approved by the city council in June. It calls for the installation of four new murals in our downtown over the next four years. A group of residents who are experts in their fields came together to help preserve our iconic Reservoir Tower. That effort is still ongoing, but East Bay MUD has decided not to begin work in 2024. We approved an updated safety element for the general plan. We installed street safety improvements around all schools. We adopted a new traffic calming program, updating the existing 20-year-old program. We approved a local road safety program as part of our commitment to Vision Zero. And in August, we launched the Slow Down Lafayette Campaign, again as part of our commitment to Vision Zero. Each of these accomplishments involves some measure of change. We have been reminded by our celebration of our history that Lafayette has always been changing. We know that Lafayette will continue to change. And we know that it's up to all of us to work together to create the change that makes Lafayette an even better place to live. Thank you to each of you for doing just that during 2023. Thank you.
Carl, thank you for that. There has been so much work and wonderful things that have come to fruition, as you note, under your lead. And as a reminder, not so long ago, Carl served on the Planning Commission before serving 10 years on city council, twice acting as mayor during that time, then took a break to focus on his day job, just some work leading a multinational network of law firms. This community, this council, is so fortunate you chose to come back and that the community elected you again to council. We've had the benefit of you serving a third term as mayor, and it has been an amazing year, filled with many accomplishments, and it had its challenges, ranging from making the transition from virtual to in-partners and public meetings, and getting the housing element adopted. Through this and all matters in between, you have led with consummate statesmanship, bringing to bear your wealth of professional and public service experience that we only greatly benefit from. You set a high bar for mayorship, running efficient, coherent, productive council meetings, even when they might go to the wee hours in the morning. You guided deliberation, looked for consensus, yet were always respectful of our thoughts and votes. Your manner of considered listening and deliberation and fair, informed decision-making is exemplary. There are many great things I could talk about that you've had a part in, but I want to mention my favorite, which is Lafayette celebrating 175-plus years. I appreciate the entire effort and collaboration with the Lafayette Historical Society and all the great people involved for awareness and appreciation of our history. It resonates with me, as the poet Maya Angelou said, "If you don't know where you've come from, you don't know where you're going." Our history helps set direction, and the knowledge is important to have as we continue to work on the new general plan. And I'm sure I speak for our community to say the experience was fun, entertaining, and an amazing addition to our public art. Thank you for all you've done, Carl. It is a great pleasure, honor, and education to work with you.
And I have a token for you. Yes. I noticed the owl motif for the wisdom.
Okay, thank you. Oop. Yeah, very nice.
It is a, a very fancy pen. Carl is old school on the note-taking, so this is I mean, you use that in, in good health and, and rewarding what you do.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to the main event, and I'm going to follow the example of Mayor Gueranger. Last year, I move that we elect Vice Mayor Dawson to serve as mayor during 2024, and we elect Councilmember Quoc to serve as Vice Mayor during 2024. Do I have a second?
I second. Simultaneously, so.
Can we both second?
I'm, yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We will now take public comment.
No, Candace. Not specifically on who's going to be mayor and vice mayor, because I wholeheartedly support that. But I do want to take this opportunity to honor outgoing Mayor Carla Andry. And as I listened to the senior village presentation tonight, and I'm a big fan of the work that's done in La Marinda with this, I was thinking about driving my father. This afternoon, I took my 93-year-old father to get a shot in the eye. Does not sound like fun, but when you have macular degeneration, you get to do things like that. And I was explaining to him where I was going tonight, and I said, well, I'm going to come and I'm going to honor Carla Andry. And I was explaining a little bit about Carl's career with Morrison and Forrester. My father is an attorney and well aware of, of the, of the great career you have when you work for a firm like that. And I was describing your years of service and getting ready to retire from or how you retired from the law firm. And he looked at me and said, and so why is he just serving on a city council? And I said, because he cares. This is a man who cares about his community. And yes, he had an illustrious career as a legal professional, the great esteem from his legal colleagues. But at the same time, he cares so deeply about this community. And I know with his years of service, both the, the earlier years and then coming back, Carl's handprint is throughout the community, and the influence he had on all of the great and wonderful things that take place in this community are, are thanks to your leadership as well as others in this community who have also devoted so much time and talent to this community. And so tonight, I do have just a very small token of appreciation, a certificate I wish to present to you, thanking you for your service. I love Gina's comments about what a great statesman you are, how you have such a presence. And as I've sat in public meetings with you where there's been little jabs and criticisms about this or that, I've just loved to watch how you just so gracefully, stoically, just thank the speaker, explain what is actually taking place, and show everyone in the room respect. And as a public official, that's what we need to do, even when we have divergent opinions. So thank you, Carl, for your service. And if I could present this to you, I'd love to.
Mayor Andry, I do have a speaker slip.
Okay.
Mary Ann Hoyzington.
I live at 959 Hawthorne, and I'm only, I'm not a, I'm not an official of any kind. I just want to represent myself and my neighborhood to say, I am so glad that I live in my little neighborhood because we care about each other and we respect each other, we watch out for one another. And we are so lucky that our neighborhood is in Lafayette. And two of the reasons why Lafayette is so wonderful are you, our council, and you are representatives of our staff. So thank you. And Carl, the way you have done your job has just been wonderful. It's been a terrific job. And you've done everything that you had to do, all the requirements, but the, when you read through the list of things, there are so many things that wouldn't have happened if you hadn't thought of them, or if you hadn't suggested them, or if you hadn't, all of you followed through with them. And we saw you everywhere in town, and thank you so much for all the time you've spent with, for us. And I bought you a little bottle of bubbly so that you and Sharon can have a time together. Because Sharon, we want to thank also for sharing you with us for a year. So thank you very much.
Mayor Andry, I have no additional speaker slips, and I see no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Only one thing to do, vote. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mayor Dawson. Congratulations, Mayor Dawson. After the break.
Thank you. Well, thank you, former Mayor Andori and fellow council members. It is a pleasure and honor to serve with you.
That's what I just
Okay, so I will say that again. Thank you, council members. It is a pleasure and honor to serve with you, all of you. And many thanks to my family, particularly my husband, Michael. From campaign manager to first gentleman, I appreciate your support. I'm fortunate to have served as Vice Mayor alongside Mayor Andori. You have been an inspiring guide of professionalism, preparedness, civility, and fairness. And former mayors Geringer and Candell, you are exemplary leaders. I'm humbled to take on this role. And as a daughter of a first-generation immigrant from the Philippines, my father, I feel honored and uplifted to become the Lafayette mayor, the first Lafayette mayor of Asian-American descent. I'm also proud to follow my dad's example of service to the community. My dad, who was a surgeon, was appointed by the California governor to serve on the state medical board and did so for over fifteen years. I'm proud to serve this community. I am ready to serve as mayor and to get to work. This coming year, we will face challenges, some known and some unknown, yet I am optimistic. I prefer to think of challenges as opportunities for coming together, building connections, and our knowledge base to come up with inclusive, innovative, and collaborative solutions. The council is a strong team and I am confident we will navigate challenges and turn them into opportunities that will best enable us to meet our goals. And we are unfortunate to have an incredible staff. The great work they do, reflected in the quality and number of services the city offers and so much more, outperforms the lean budget we operate on. We are deeply grateful for your work. During this current fiscal year, from July twenty twenty-three to the end of June twenty twenty-four, the council is focused on four priorities: wildfire prevention and utility safety, safe multimodal transportation, a new framework for vibrant, balanced downtown, and a fiscal sustainability plan for the short and the long term. Council, we meet early in the new year to discuss our progress and set priorities and we will adopt new ones for the new fiscal year, starting in June, July twenty twenty-four. We welcome and encourage community input to this process. As I look to the new year, my focus will be to leverage the investment of time and efforts that staff, the many volunteers and community members have made towards current commitments and priorities and the knowledge gained from these efforts. We have a lot to do this year and this list is rife with challenges and opportunities. Opportunities to make connections and build stronger ones with community stakeholders and potential partners who also need to get things done. Opportunity lies in discussing our objectives, our capabilities, our willingness to work together so we can collaborate on innovative solutions and efficiencies to get as close as we can to our goals and accomplish them. A good example is attaining affordable housing goals that set forth in our housing element. We cannot meet these goals alone. We need to hit the ground running and engage with fellow housing stakeholders to make the connections that will facilitate commitments and investments to get housing plans and built. Another timely example is starting working on a new framework for our downtown to make it the most vibrant, inclusive, safest place it can be. In planning, we will need input from all stakeholders, including our downtown business community, our valued partners, the Chamber of Commerce, and residents. This also includes making investments in building affordable homes downtown. Stakeholders making investments in building affordable homes downtown. The council is poised to address improving the city's fiscal sustainability. Our five-year fiscal outlook protects the decline in the city reserve. This challenge gives us opportunity to reach out to our residents to find out what they value in the community and their satisfaction with the city's services and amenities. With this information, we, in turn, will provide revenue options that we can improve our financial position to best serve our community. Council priority of wildfire prevention and utility safety is another one that benefits from opportunistic thinking, specifically the collaboration with our energy provider PG&E. This important collaboration has already produced measurable results to make our community safer and we have more to discuss as we implement programs from our recently adopted safety element. I could go on and I'm sure you want me to, but the message I want to get across is that challenges we face equal opportunities to make Lafayette an even better place to be. Thank you, member, Councilmember Andori, it's hard to call you that, but get used to that, for putting forth the Slow Down Lafayette Initiative. Recent implementation has already helped decrease driver speeds and increase awareness. I would be glad to continue this effort and propose an ad hoc committee with WIL to do so. As a reminder to us all, especially as it's time when we could get distracted by or are part of this year-end hustle bustle, please slow down, be aware, commit to your personal safety and that of your neighbors by driving at or below the speed limits. Finally, there is much going on in the world and in our country that may impact our sense of peace and well-being. I affirm Lafayette stands united against hate. In twenty twenty-two, council adopted a new city mission statement. We are guided by that community-driven vision to be a welcoming, inclusive, safe place for all. Let's carry on in the respectful civil tradition that is a hallmark of our city. Lafayette is and will continue to be a wonderful, safe place to be. Thank you again for this privilege. I look forward to serving the community with Vice Mayor Quoc and our fellow council members. We welcome and appreciate your engagement. Thank you. And with that, I want to welcome any public comment. Mayor Dawson, I have no speaker slips and no hands raised. Well, with that, we will adjourn for cake. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's hell.
I knew this would happen. I warned everybody. I warned you personally, actually. So, Vice Mayor Quoc, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Let me just add two observations. Number one, I wanted to extend my thanks to Councilmember Andori for an outstanding year as mayor. He is, was truly, for me, a model of professionalism, diplomacy, and representation of the community that, and I know it's because you've had two times as mayor, so the third time definitely was a charm. And thank you to Sharon, his wife, because we know how much time that Mayor, then Mayor Andori spent preparing for our meetings and leading us through very difficult, some very difficult meetings where I knew I was in trouble when he brought a stack of papers this high with a lot of yellow Post-it notes. And honestly, he came very prepared and he led us very capably. And I think a lot of times I was just so happy that how efficiently we were able to tackle many of the difficult issues of our, of our, of our city. So, thank you for being a great example for all of us and working so hard this past year. On another note, I would, I want to thank my fellow council members for extending me the privilege to be your Vice Mayor in twenty twenty-four. I'm very excited to work with Mayor Gina Dawson in the upcoming year. Mayor Dawson mentioned that she is a daughter of immigrants and that gets me to think that I, I too am the son of immigrants. My parents fled Communist China in the nineteen forties and became grateful citizens here of the United States. And I can say that it's in the Quoc family DNA to, to show our appreciation for America's democratic system of government and to volunteer our service to our community and by extension to our country. So, it's really an honor to, to serve the community here in Lafayette, to serve alongside this city council, and I look forward to another very productive year ahead in twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Quoc. Okay, with that, now we will adjourn for cake.
Too small. Uh, yeah. And then I always just give it to one of the commanders. So it's not particularly on the part of the Congress. Uh, no, I know we can see that. Yes, yes. Uh, it's good. I don't know. I don't know. You know, I mean, I don't know. Uh, yeah. We don't like it in the morning. Yeah. I think I've got it. Yeah. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Even though it's a change. Um, of course, I think that's good. When I meet, I talk, I don't know. I'm like, hey, I want to go to the next one. I'm like, hey, I'm trying to find out. I'm having to do that. So we have to, you know, on the top, yeah. I mean, it's, and I was, I wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to, when I had sixty seven, I was thinking, yeah. Yeah. So, uh, uh, I'm sorry. It's now, it's not working. And I was, I was, so that is, uh, totally, exactly.
We are back and we are reconvening and we are going to start in with the item, agenda item number 12, the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything off? No? Any public comment?
Mayor Dawson, I have no request from the public to pull an item from the consent calendar.
Hey, do I have a motion to pass the consent calendar? Yeah, so moved. Second. We'll take a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. The consent calendar is accepted. Item number 13, no old business. Is there staff reports?
No staff reports?
Okay, no public carings. Okay, we will move on to item number 17, council and commission reports. Does anyone have anything?
Sure.
Mayor Klock?
I'd like to report on the status of the Lafayette reservoir tower with East Bay Mud. And as we recall, there's a recommendation from East Bay Mud to remove or shorten the tower at the reservoir and that there's a citizens group that has been, from Lafayette, that has reviewed and offered other options to preserve the current tower height. The citizens group and East Bay Mud have been going back and forth with conversations. And most recently, the citizens committee presented an alternative to East Bay Mud and their engineering firm to, that involved not removing the tower. And so the East Bay Mud and their engineering team have been reviewing that, gave feedback in a meeting after Thanksgiving holidays and now it's, the ball is in the citizens court to review East Bay Mud's feedback. So I do want to appreciate the citizens group led by Gordon Chong, who was here a little bit earlier. He is accompanied by a half a dozen Lafayette residents who are civil, mechanical, structural engineers, architects, really a very incredible, incredibly capable and experienced group that are working with East Bay Mud to try to find whether there's a compromise that could involve keeping and retaining the tower at its current height. But this will be something that will continue into 2024. There's been no specific resolution yet, but I just wanted to report that that is, has been happening actively on both sides.
Thank you. Any, any questions? I have a question for you. Do you know, was it the positive feedback? Is it basically going to be a back and forth that you know of in terms of positivity?
I think that both sides seem to be, so the question is, it's fortunately a positive interaction back and forth to try to explore whether there's a win-win solution on the table. So far, the parties have not yet found that solution. And so, but, but the door's been left open by both sides to pursue that still.
That's right. Many thanks to that citizens group. It's awesome. Any other reports? Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, so Councilmember Geringer and I last, it's a Thursday? Yeah, Thursday went to the town hall on the School Street project. The School Street and Topper Lane and improvements around Stanley, including a new rendering of a drop-off on St. Mary's Road. And it was, it was pretty well attended, probably not 100 people, but you know, almost close. And they had stations, it was really well done. Staff did a tremendous job in the presentation, I thought. And then everybody fanned out to go to these different stations. No surprise, the Topper Lane got the most track, you know, most visits. The other one, you know, School Street did, we heard a lot from the residents about the design and the kind of vegetation they want in that vegetation. They want it different than First Street, so they, they've got a very different, you know, palette in mind with what they're considering and but to say what a different place we're in from two years ago, we're in a completely different place from two years ago. We have people working together to try to come up with viable solutions and that is not where we were. And that is great, we still have what I think is still a gap on Topper Lane between a three-foot path and then a six-foot path, but it is, we're closing. And that is tremendous news. I just want to thank staff for all, they put a lot of work and the consultant, they put a lot of work into this and it was very, very well done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Geringer?
Well, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Candell for covering that. And I did want to acknowledge that our sort of partner and in transportation and getting students to and from schools safely, the school district, there was a school board member and superintendent Brett Stevens was able to attend as well and went around to some of the different boards, if you will. And I, kudos also to the process because it was definitely focused and everybody got to share, but not in a whole big group kind of target focusing on staff. So I think there was good information. I look forward to the reports that'll come to the, to the committee, to the council. The other thing is that I had the opportunity along with the former mayor to go to the, I'll not always say it with a smile, but, but the former mayor to the lighting of the menorah. And so that was well done and some lessons learned on how, how that, how we'll partner on that going forward. And then also, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the beginning of this meeting with the La Mirinda Village and with Don Tatsin giving his report, just very feeling, feeling, good feelings about community. On Friday, for a couple of hours, we got to, you know, be out at the community center and get to have that experience with the members of the community and the volunteers and the board members with the La Mirinda Village. And I think that's sort of where I've been, so I'll end there.
Thank you.
I think we're all aware that the Ocalanis Dons football team won the AAA California High School Championship. It's the first men's team to win a state championship. Evidently, there are two women's teams, including volleyball, that have won in the past. And at Councilmember Candell's suggestion, I wrote to the neighborhood council in Lake Balboa, which is where Birmingham High School is located, and offered them a wager and heard nothing back. So I'm not sure. There were plenty of email addresses. I'm surprised that no one picked up on it and got back, but so who knows what the community dynamic is in Lake Balboa between the neighborhood councils and the schools. Can only, only speculate. But congratulations to the Dons and we may want to try to get a representative or the team here in January and properly honor them. The other thing I learned, thanks to former mayor Horn, who sent me an email, I did not realize, and there may be some football fans here who recognize the name, but Norm Van Brocklin, is that a familiar name to anyone? He was an all-pro for six straight years with the Los Angeles Rams, one of the greatest quarterbacks in NFL history, particularly in the, he was a star in the 1950s. He attended Ocalanis High School for three years and was the quarterback of their football team in the 1940s. So this is, you know, we have the, the best quarterback on a Don's team since Norm Van Brocklin. I realize that's going to resonate only with a certain generation. Okay, and then one of the things after, at the end of the afternoon of gratitude, leaving the community center, Jonathan just stepped outside. It's, it was amazing Friday afternoon at the community center because you have the construction going on for the new playground. You had all these classes in session. You had the big bus pulling up for people. You had 200 people spilling out of the community hall to, it was just an amazing, it's, it's the community center at its finest. So Jonathan, it's just amazing to see all that activity out there. Thank you for your leadership on all that. It's just wonderful. Yeah. And then Councilmember Candell and I attended the lighting, the Tree of Light Ceremony in Arinda, which now is done there for all three La Mirinda towns. And that was a very meaningful experience. I think that's about it. Yep.
Thank you, and thank you for your representation, all of you. I have one report that last week I had the opportunity in order to meet Attorney General Rob Bonta. And it was a good experience. I was able to talk to him for a few minutes. You know, let him know a little bit about Lafayette. And I don't, in September, the Attorney General filed a lawsuit against the Big Five oil companies. And basically, he's calling it a crime that they knew what they were doing. They knew the effects of climate change and what it could do. And also, they were aware that there were ways to reduce the damage. So his lawsuit is about getting money back because the state of California is obviously paid a lot to mitigate the effects of climate change as well as notes its will into the future. And the goal is to also have that come to cities who also have had impacts of climate change. And obviously Lafayette has, it's changed the way we're looking to where we can build our homes. It's changing the maps that, California Fire Maps, it's, it's changing a lot of things for us. So it'll be interesting to watch this and, you know, get information. The other good news is that I did get a card so that we can call on his office for other things. So doing some networking. You know, he is a, also a Filipino descent and I was telling him because he also was the first in that office. So it was fun to make that connection and hopefully I remember one too, so that when we go back, I can have little things to, when we need to talk to him or would like to talk to his office, just another connection. Okay, and I think that's it. If there's no other staff reports. Then we are on to item 17B, the solid waste rates report.
Thank you, Mayor Dawson. What's before you this evening, city council members, is to establish the solid waste rates for next year, starting March 1, 2024. Your representatives to the Solid Waste Authority, Mayor Dawson and Councilmember Geringer, met twice with the consultant and the solid waste staff and looked at a variety of options. And the staff report identifies the criteria with which they evaluated these scenarios and are recommending a rate increase of 7.25%. A lot of that goes into the CPEI of 4.8% and increases labor cost escalations and fuel cost increases. The staff report contains a list of jurisdictions that are serviced by Recycle Smart and as you can see, Lafayette is somewhere in the middle of that, of that range. We continue to, the liaisons have continued to be mindful of the, the impacts of the trucks on our streets, so to make, make sure that the vehicle impact fees are funded. And at this time, they are recommending that you support a 7.25% increase. And I'd be, turn it over to your liaison so you can ask them more questions.
Thank you for your report. Any questions? Okay. If there are no questions, I'll call for a public comment.
Mayor Dawson, I have one hand raised, but I have no speaker slips for members in the community hall. Rob Lavoy.
Welcome, Rob.
Rob, you need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Sorry about that. Congratulations for everyone on their new jobs. I'm just looking at the proposed rates and I noticed Danville is 38 and we're $44. So I'm wondering why Danville's so much cheaper than Lafayette or even Walnut Creek at $29. It doesn't seem like they're that much more complicated than we are. So did anybody get any input on that? Why, why we're so much higher than those cities?
Rob, thanks. I could address that after your public comment.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No additional public comments, Mayor Dawson.
Thank you. So basically, each city has, is unique, you know, the layout, the terrain. So that is all factored in. And also, it does depend on the amount of, of the, the weight of the product. So these are carefully, it's not really necessary comparison between the cities when it comes to setting the rate, nor really the, the, the rate that's charged. So Walnut Creek, you'll see has a lower cost than Lafayette, but we were very cognizant of the fact of taking into all the cost considerations as well as covering the, the service charges. So it is in line, actually with the, with the rate increase that those cities also went through. I hope that answers your question. And if you have others, please write. I'd be glad to help you with that. Thank you. Okay, if there's no other public comments, we will move on to item 17. Oh, right. Oh, is this a motion? Yes, it is. Oh, question direct. Okay.
The recommendation, if you agree to the 7.25%.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. So may I have a motion to if, for a vote on basically the, this new rate?
So I'm happy to make the motion, but we're making a motion to provide direction that the council is in support of the recommended 7.25%. So yes, I would make that motion.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I am an aye too. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we will move on to agenda item 17C, allocation of funds for employee bonuses. I will start this off. We will be discussing the end of year bonus for staff. And we do have a recommendation for a amount of, that is similar to what bonus has been for the past two years. And it is, basically amounts to about 4% in the pool, $225,000 and also a bonus for our city manager at $10,000. So I would like to open the discussion to council so that we can either move this forward or adjust as appropriate. Any comments? Anyone like to start?
I'll offer some comments. First of all, we have had an annual bonus in our city for 20 of the last 24 years. And I think what we should remember is that our employees of our city are unlike most other cities that they do not have the same pension program available. And so our city operates more of a, as a, as like a private company and not, we don't have the same public sector incentives. And so the bonuses are an important part of compensation for our city. In the past few years, we have had a bonus pool of approximately $225,000 plus 10 or $11,000 bonus for the city manager. There had been years where there was no bonus, such as the COVID year of 2020 or back in 2010, or where there were, we were much more limited in our economic situation. So just wanted to offer a little bit of background as to why does the city have a bonus system in place and just a little bit of context of the last couple of years trends in, in the order of magnitude of the bonus pool.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Klock. Thank you, Vice Mayor Quoc. Councilmember Geringer?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Quoc, for the background on that. And I would and Mayor Dawson for sharing sort of where we would start the consideration. I think that we kicked off our meeting with the city manager's report that basically outlined in very quantitative measures about how much the city has accomplished. The mayor then went through in his comments and further emphasized all that we've accomplished. In a couple, a couple of very bad, I mean, not bad, hard, challenging, lots of things going on. And particularly this year, where, you know, beginning the year, our staffing levels were not always up. And so making the choice to not fill some of those positions, which resulted in a little bit of cost savings, if you will, also put more pressure on our staff and our employees to build the, as we said, the running of the city and to make sure that things got done. And so I am supportive, knowing that we have interest, the economy and those things that are happening would maybe make us want to take, step back and be a little bit more conservative, but I support for the reasons that our staff has been doing so much more and and accomplished so much this year. The thoughts on the same as last year at the 225, 225,000. And it takes really good leadership to accomplish all of those things, and I think that our city manager has also exhibited that strong leadership, and so I would support at the 10,000 and look forward to the discussion with my colleagues.
Councilmember Andori?
Yeah, I would just point out that during this past year, we had several positions that were authorized, but we chose not to fill them, which put additional burden on existing staff. I think it's also fair to say that the workload on existing staff was at least as high as it has been in past years. I mean, we started out with the severe weather in end of December and January, that sort of set the tone. I mean, Public Works really bore the brunt of that for a couple of months. Planning, of course, was working full out throughout the year. We had record attendance at our recreation programs. It's just been a big year. So I think in terms of the reasons we have bonuses to incentivize employees, to increase morale among our employees, I think it's fitting that we have the same level of bonus as we have had in the past two years. So I completely support the proposal.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Candell?
And I support everything that my fellow council members have said. And I, but one more piece did come up, is that we know we are facing some financial hard times in the future, and that was, well, so do we keep the same level of bonuses, or do we start cutting back the bonuses now? And I I think all of us were in very much agreement that this is for the work they did this last year. It's not for next year, the years ahead. It's what they've done this last year. So it did, definitely, we definitely discussed it, that we are facing a different story in the future. But we wanted to make sure that this afternoon, that this is rewarding them for a job well done this past year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all your comments, and and I do agree for all the reasons that you are bringing forward. Our staff is incredible. I mentioned in my comments earlier that they do, they outperform our budget. They they are amazing. So I think this bonus, as you mentioned, Councilmember Candell, reflects the work, the hard work, the long work, the many hours, the extended work on on various projects, not only on our basic level of services, which you wouldn't think are basic, but also the priorities that that council has set, and they are, continue to work on with us. So I will take a vote to
Would you like a?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let me please ask for public opinion. How many passes do I get? I'm gonna cash them all in.
Mayor Dawson, we have no speaker slips and we have no raised hands in our virtual audience on this item.
Thank you. On that note, though, I will call for a motion.
And happy to, or Vice Mayor Quoc, you had laid it out for us.
Okay, I move that we allocate a $225,000 bonus pool for staff and a $10,000 bonus for the the city manager for 2023 calendar year bonus.
And I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I am an aye. It is unanimous. Thank you.
I just want to thank the council on behalf of staff. It's truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 17D, Resolution 2023 to appointing one member to the Environmental Task Force. Councilmember Quoc and Mayor Andori?
All righty. This year, for the Environmental Task Force, there is a vacancy, and on the seven-member task force, we are extremely fortunate to have six applicants for that one vacancy, and they were six really exceptional applicants. So it was quite a difficult decision to, for us to go through. I want to express our deep appreciation for everyone who did express interest in our city's environmental work and the great work of the task force. In the end, Councilmember Andori and I would like to propose Jeanine Smith for this vacancy. She's been a resident of Lafayette for four years. She works at Grid Alternatives, which is a solar energy nonprofit based in Oakland. And she is a board member of the Lafayette Elementary School PTA in the role of Vice President of Environment. And so we would like to recommend Jeanine Smith for that role, while also thanking the other five applicants for their interest and would encourage them to participate on ETF projects in 2024 as volunteers.
Thank you. I imagine that was a tough decision, but I saw those those applications, an incredible group. On that note, do I have a motion to accept the appointment?
Does the committee want to make it, or do you want to go for public comment?
Is there public comments?
Mayor Dawson, I have no speaker, we're gonna make you go through this.
I know, thank you. I just will make it hopefully better at least.
I have no speaker slips and no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Thank you very much. Would, would, is there a motion on to to appoint Jeanine Smith?
Okay, I'll move adoption of Resolution 202359, appointing Jeanine Smith to the Environmental Task Force.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations and welcome Jeanine to the Environmental Task Force. And now we are on to item 18A. We have no written comment. So we are on, actually on to item 19, 18A. Oh, we Okay. Okay, it was a letter from Lafayette Community Garden and Outdoor Learning Center Board. And to the Annual Review of Changes Made and Activities at the Lafayette Community Garden and Outdoor Learning Center. And I know Janet Thomas was here earlier, and she has left, but I want to thank her for that report and for all the incredible work and that that garden is a gem in our city, and we are so glad of that and for all the work that keeps it going and the families that are part of that. It's a, it's a very exciting project, and it's another one like La Mirinda Village, another feather in Lafayette's cap to be proud of and and be a part of and an extol. So are there any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Andori?
I'll say this, this is a real, it's a great part of our community. It really provides a chance to garden and to meet with others who are interested in it. And it looks great for anyone coming into the city. It's just, it's a fantastic place. I did receive a comment during the cake break, why didn't I mention the community garden during my remarks? That was my wife. Anyway, they're, they're just, it's a great thing.
Your wife is right. Yeah. Any other comment from the council? Okay, any comments from the public?
No comments from the public, Mayor Dawson.
Okay, well, we received that report with gratitude. Now, I think we are on to, oh. Oh, yes.
In honor of whatever?
Yes, please.
I'd like to adjourn this meeting on behalf of Dons Football.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, go Dons. So this meeting is adjourned.